I call the meeting to order. The City of Frankfurt Board of Commissioners, October Work Session. Today is October 13th. It's 3:00 PM Eastern. I'll ask the man in charge to call the roll.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Unger?
Present.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Smith-Willis?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Present.
Provided there's no ceremonial recognition, provided there's no citizens' comments.
Correct.
I'll turn it over to our city manager for the discussion. And I'll also turn over the gavel to Mayor Proton, Commissioner Smith-Willis, who can facilitate the meeting from here.
Item number one of discussions is the flood relief fund update from Harry Carver.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm actually have been thinking about this for a minute. And the mayor had called me last week and said, "Do you think you could give us a little update on the flood relief fund?" I said, "Sure." For those of you out there in TV land and here, that the flood relief fund would not exist if it weren't for the fact that we have the Franklin County Community Fund here in existence, here in Franklin County. The community fund is an endowed fund. We do not spend any money out of that fund. The only money that comes out of that fund is grants from earnings from that fund. However, because of our existence and the fact that the Franklin County Community Fund is affiliated with the Bluegrass Community Foundation, we have the ability to create non-endowed funds to serve special, you know, needs that arise in the community. For example, during COVID, we set up a special fund and raised about $40,000 to help nonprofits that were stretched to the limit during COVID. And we're able to do that. Then similarly, when, you know, within days after the flood this year, we were able to, you know, pull the trigger and set up this fund and begin raising money. So that is helpful to have that infrastructure in place to be able to do that, you know, on a moment's notice and be able to start, you know, raising money and having a place that, you know, where the folks will take care of the administrative stuff, thank people for their contributions right away and acknowledge them to make sure that people know that they've been received and have their tax letters in case they need it for tax reasons. Anyway, that having been said, so we set up the flood relief fund within days of the flood back in, I can't believe it's been six months ago now. To date, we've raised $409,101, exactly, you know, to be exact. The interesting thing about this is, you know, when you have money, you would think it's really easy to spend. Now, because this money comes to us and to this fund, we cannot give it directly to individuals. We can only give money to nonprofits that are, you know, serving affected folks. Fortunately, we were able to, right off the bat, to partner with two community entities. One, a known, long-term known quantity in the community, which is Rosam, the Resource Office for Social Ministries, which has been around for years and is, you know, a long-term trusted community partner. And they're in the business of helping individuals that are in need. So they have a good track record there. And also, we were able to bring in the Cares Coalition, which is a much more recent group that has come to pass in the past several years. And we have had, fortunately, we've had a good relationship with them because at the beginning, if you all remember the umbrellas in the alley, the Franklin County Community Fund was able to serve as their fiscal agent so that they could do that project and raise money for startup money for the Cares Coalition. And so, it really worked out well that we had both of these entities in place to start figuring out how to spend the money. The Cares Coalition, obviously, is a, you know, a broad group of nonprofits that serve the entire community. So we were able to cover as best we could right from the start, you know, what we needed to do. Now, the hard part about this is the first part in a flood is, it sounds weird, it's easy, but it's not easy. It's easy in that what you want to do is you need to make sure that people are sheltered, that they're fed, and that they're clothed. And that's something that, you know, we were able to do quickly, you know, as all of you know. I mean, people came together and there was a lot of community interest. Actually, there's almost too much. I think they've still got clothes stacked up in places that people collected right after the flood. So like that first part of it, you know, yes, we were able to house people, we were able to make sure that people got fed, we were able to, you know, get credit cards to them or gift cards so that they could buy clothes or whatever else their immediate needs were. As time went on, you know, now we're into the, you know, the rebuilding process. Now, before I get to that, you know, a lot of what, you know, we had at the beginning, Jason, there was a lot of, you know, we weren't sure about some things that were happening. You know, the housing part of it was a little bit difficult. We didn't even realize that the state had a program that would help temporarily house people. So we had a lot of nonprofits in the community and different organizations that were paying to house people. So right off the bat, there was money, you know, coming out of this fund to do that and to cover local organizations' expenses. Once Commonwealth Shelter, is that what it is, started housing people and they started consolidating people in the hotel, we were spending money making sure that they got fed. Most of them, those rooms did not have kitchens, they were not able to, you know, cook for themselves. So we wanted to make sure that people, you know, did get fed. After a while, we were able to work with the hotel, they started providing breakfast again. I think there was a little lag there. And we were providing multiple meals. So now, and then we started with the folks that were, had, I would say, easier solutions, if you will. Folks that either were renters and were not going back to the places they were renting, we were able to help them with utility deposits and things to get them started. If they lost, you know, appliances than things in the flood, we've been buying, you know, appliances for folks. So that kind of stuff has been going on, you know, from the beginning, or not from the beginning, but close to the beginning. What has come to, you know, right now was what we're realizing in this, you know, it's kind of shining a hole and, or shining a light on a hole, if you will, in our social safety net. I mean, we have an incredible number of really good nonprofits that serve the community, that work really hard. But what we really don't have is, we don't have, you know, an active nonprofit housing developer. I know that's being worked on right now, but it's not in a position where they're actually able to go out and build and rebuild. Our Fuller Center, which is a similar organization to Habitat for Humanity, and actually, that chapter here was Habitat for Humanity for years, they really don't have the capacity. So we're kind of stuck in this place right now where we have, you know, about $200,000 left to spend and that we want to spend it, and we want to spend it as equitably as possible in helping folks get back into their houses. I know we've started having discussions with some of the churches in town to, you know, they're putting together crews of people to help folks. So, you know, so we've been talking to them about, "Hey, if you've got the volunteers to do this, we can help buy the materials and what is it that folks need, you know, to get back in their house?" So it's that sort of thing that's going on right now. It's a very, it's a much slower process, you know, for those of us that were flooded. I mean, you know, it's hard to believe that it's been six months. I have a whole house full of drywall dust right now. So, and then that, but that's been, you know, they didn't start doing that from, you know, last week. So for people that, you know, this is just, you know, and Jane Higgins with the Community Foundation, who has worked in eastern Kentucky after their floods, they're still giving money to people. They're still putting people in new houses there. So it's a long process and, you know, we're still getting contributions, fortunately, so that, you know, as time goes on and the needs continue, that we will be able to meet them. The good, there's some good news that's come out of this with the Cares Coalition meeting with FEMA. They've started working on what they call a VOAD. It's a volunteer organization active during disasters so that we're prepared better for next time, not for necessarily what, you know, the city and the county and, you know, the emergency management efforts do, but that we're better organized from, you know, our nonprofits, from the social safety net, you know, from that aspect of it so that we can make sure that, you know, that folks are coordinating right from the beginning. So that's, you know, that's good news. Does anybody have any questions about what we've done, what we're doing, what we could do? Any ideas for folks that are able to help rebuild?
I can open up. Commissioner May?
Thank you.
Mr. Carver, thanks for the update. Right now, what would you, what resources are still available for people? If you kind of just kind of summarize everything you talked about. And sometimes we find ourselves surprised, kind of, I think you kind of hit on that, that it's actually difficult to move this money. So you've got 200,000 left in there. That can help people do what?
If people need, you know, materials as they're putting their house back together, we can help them with that. If they're already to the point where they're back in and they need, you know, they've lost their washer and dryer, their stove and refrigerator, we've been able to help with that. And that also goes for folks that are, like I said, that are changing locations, that were in rental properties, that perhaps are not going back to their rental properties and lost, and they own their appliances and lost them and that, then we're able to help with that. I know that we've talked with, you know, like with the South Frankfurt Neighborhood Association and talked about specific needs that they might have that we, you know, in terms of rebuilding, that we may be able to, you know, help with. So it's anything like that. If people have, you know, specific needs that are manageable, the problem with this is with $200,000 and 100 houses that are still, I don't know how many, we don't even know exactly how many are, but process, you know, where they are in their process, you know, that is, you know, the amount that we can, you know, help with for an individual house, it's limited. So we want to make sure that we're being equitable in how we spend this money, but also to, you know, there's a lot of folks that we know have not requested help, that don't need help, that had insurance, that were able to start doing things before they could be reimbursed by their flood insurance. So it's just a matter now of, you know, finding people or having people find us and letting us help them. But in terms of those folks that you might find that are less, that need help, that need all kinds of help, that need guidance and stuff, that they, you know, that, they're the ones that, you know, we're kind of worried about. And who is it that's going to actually physically be able to help guide them through the process and actual, you know, make sure that they get attached to a contractor and able to do what they need, or to a group of volunteers? So.
Am I right in saying, I feel like after listening, that we have a big opportunity here on the communication piece and the reaching the individuals that need it?
And we've been going back out to the, to folks that filled out applications at the beginning and, you know, regrouping with them and seeing where they are in the process and what they need now. But that doesn't, you know, not everybody did fill out an application at the beginning. So, okay. And you can, usually, one of the best ways, you know, right now to reach people is just to do frankfortcares@gmail.com, just have them email us at the Cares Coalition.
Commissioner Richardson?
I have a quick question. I'm a little confused, maybe. So you are able to help, earlier you mentioned, you know, you have to go through nonprofits.
Right.
You don't help individual, but you were saying that you can't help with supplies?
Well, and, well, excuse me, I mean, but if the, one of our, either, whether it's the Cares Coalition or one of their partner nonprofits or Rosam can write the checks or can buy the, you know, the washer and dryer for them, so I just can't do it directly out of the fund. We'll make sure that the nonprofit has the money to do it.
Okay, that was my confusion.
Sorry, I just probably left that little part down.
No, no, I was a little confused, because, you know, when you said, I go, "Well, wait a minute, maybe I heard you wrong." Okay, great. And I do like the idea, because I know several churches in town put together, you know, a crew and that can do a lot of that, you know, a lot of the carpentry work, framing, whatever. I think that's a great idea to get that out as well.
And I know that, you know, that there has been some outreach within the churches to other churches, so hopefully that'll start to come together a little bit, you know.
Commissioner Unger?
Thank you for being here. You guys have done so much good work and I appreciate the update. I was sort of wondering, in order to make sure, like you said, this is like equitable and getting the remaining funds out to people, do you think you'll set up maybe a timeframe for people to apply? Or is it still just sort of, is it going to be like a first come, first served?
We have not talked about setting up a deadline because, like I said, this is an, I don't want to say it's never ending, because it will end. It will end at some point, but it's not anytime soon. So if we start doing hard and fast deadlines, we're going to run into trouble and people are going to be left out. That's also why I talk about, you know, making sure we're distributing the money equitably because, you know, if I say, "Oh, I've got this much left right now," and 20 people show up and I give them all the money, then, you know, some people are going to be left out. So it's kind of a weird dance. And the good news is that money continues to come in and that they're, you know, so that, you know, we're not spending down to zero quite yet.
Go ahead. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I was just going to add to your, the time, I spoke to the mayor, I mean, Hazard, that area, they're still dealing with the flooding they had. So, and issues with needs for folks. So I think that's, and that's been two years, three years?
Yeah.
That flooding happened two years?
Twenty-two. First one was 22, I think, wasn't it?
Almost three years. That's what I'm saying. So I just wanted to illustrate the time it may take. I mean, we may be into this a couple of years, so I appreciate your foresight on that.
Yeah. I think, follow up real fast.
Yeah. Commissioner Unger?
Is there any way that city government can help you guys? Like, I don't know if it would be touching base on certain properties or if maybe even other volunteers could help get the word out to. I mean, if there's anything you can think that we can do better to help.
I guess, you know, I mean, we've been pretty good. I mean, everybody's been good up to this point in, you know, terms of communicating with each other. I think that maybe now between, you know, the city and the county and, you know, the planning folks, you know, Eric Shop, and then over in the county, you know, like, okay, who's gotten, because everybody got permits, but how many people are dealing, how many people are actually doing something? How many, particularly in the, you know, the county, how many of the affected properties are going to take the buyout? We know it's, you know, it's a much smaller number here in the city, so it's easier to manage and figure out which ones they are. But, you know, that kind of thing, so we can start to, you know, narrow down who hasn't gotten any help that still needs help. Because I know, you know, 1st Corinthians, I mean, they've been doing a lot of help, you know, with folks, you know, from day one. And a lot of it is involved, you know, figuring out ways to get them in the house. So I think, you know, I couldn't tell you exactly how much, I mean, I can tell you how much they've gotten money-wise, but they've done a lot of different things, you know, with folks in the community since they were kind of at ground zero.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It's might be like a very amateur question, but for people that are watching, how can people still continuously donate if that's an option, if there's no deadline? And then my follow-up question with that is, you know, with the board, is there initiative in place or is it on the radar right now to, I guess, to figure out how we can reach those people that have not been touched yet or that might not have access to shoot an email real quick saying that they need a little assistance? So what is that, is that conversation being had?
Right, right. Well, that's what, we're kind of pushing to gather the, all the various spreadsheets, you know, that people are keeping, you know, starting with the, you know, the one where the initial list of, you know, properties that were impacted by the flood and then taking the ones off that, you know, really didn't have any real damage, that, you know, that were then trying to pull the people out that, you know, that didn't need help. Or then the people that, you know, then, you know, and then we know this group of people, you know, has gotten help so far. So who is it, you know, that's missing? And then once we get a really better handle on who that group is, is who, which ones of them are homeowners and which ones are renters, because, you know, it's two different, you know, ways of approaching it and what their needs might be. But I said, none of this, you know, if it hadn't been for, you know, Tommy and Jane at Rosam or, you know, Charlie and the gang at, you know, the Cares Coalition, there's no way we would have gotten this money out and gotten help for people. It was, you know.
I also just wanted to follow up and say thank you for all the work that you all have been doing. It's been, I can't believe it's been six months since the flood, but I think we all just like, just going through the motions and that's not even speaking, being directly impacted. But I genuinely appreciate the work that you all have done and I know it's hard to follow up and be in the know about everything, so thank you for coming today to talk to us about it.
Sure. Just, you know, anytime you all have, anybody has any questions or anything, just holler at me and we'll get to the bottom of it. Thank you. Anybody got any?
Cool. And nobody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion item number two is Assured Partners 2026 Benefits Presentation with Kathy Fields and Wayne Willis.
I was going to introduce Wayne, but it looks like he's got it, so.
I've been here all, you know, we've done this before. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Are you, is the presentation going to go up on the screen?
It should, yeah.
Okay. So everybody's favorite time of year, the insurance benefits renewal, it's like Christmas for us. The first couple pages in the slide deck were more for your review, just to see plan performance. It's got medical claims and enrollment history back to 2017. And then it's also got, so that's in there. You can just see how the enrollment has stayed relatively flat over the last eight years. Medical claims, obviously, have escalated. And, you know, I want to point out that the pharmacy claims actually had dropped off in '24 when you all first made the decision to move the PBM piece to TRX. And it's one of the pieces that I want to talk to you about today as far as 2026 goes. This slide just shows you how the expenses relate to budget in the fiscal year. So it's the same information, just in a different format. And so we're going to get into the actual 2026 renewal. So the current third-party administrator for the medical claims is UMR, which is United Healthcare Company. United Healthcare is the network. TRX is the prescription benefit manager component of the benefit plan for the City of Frankfurt. Currently, the stop-loss reinsurance is with a company called TMHCC. We placed that in '24. It has a $100,000 limit per member and aggregate coverage, which protects the City of Frankfurt from a catastrophic plan year. On a per subscriber per month basis, so per employee per month, medical claims have actually increased 13% year-over-year when you compare January through August of '25 to January of August of '24. And RX claims, even though the cost has come down over the last several years, it has spiked in the last 12 months to the tune of 57% on a per subscriber per month basis. The number looks worse than it really is because the plan had made a decision in '24 that drastically reduced the RX cost. And this is a problem that a lot of groups are experiencing, a lot of municipalities, a lot of companies, white collar, blue collar, doesn't matter, public and private sector, RX costs continue to go up. The '26 renewal pricing, along with fixed costs, was going to be approximately a small increase of 2.77%. And again, that's a, you're self-funded, so it's a projection for claims going forward. The only required benefit change that you have to do is on the high deductible health plan, the HSA plan. That's currently a $3,300 single deductible. The IRS is mandating that go to $3,400 next year. They did the same thing last year, they'll do the same thing again next year, so we'll have the exact same conversation regarding that. So that will go to a $3,400 single, $6,800 family deductible. One of the things that we did talk about and mention last year was a program called Sharks. And Sharks is an RX advocacy program that does personal importation for specialty medications, so international sourcing. They also do patient assistance programs. They do a variety of things on the backend to make sure that the employee and the member gets their medication in the regular cadence in which they need it, but at no cost to them, but a significantly lower cost to the city. By implementing that program, you can actually mitigate the proposed increase for next year and you can maintain level costs for the entire year for the city. All of the other coverages, we did take to market. We did an extensive marketing effort this year, went to six additional markets for these coverages. No one could actually meet the current terms. And we got additional rate guarantees of two years on dental, vision, life, voluntary life, disability, and retiree life. So no changes in benefits, additional two-year rate guarantee on all lines of coverage, no change in benefits. These are the current employee costs per month for the buy-up, the core, and the high deductible health plan. And based on implementation of the Sharks program, our recommendation would be that employee premiums remain the same in 2026. And that box to the right generates, that's the dollar amount that's generated for the city from employee contributions based on current enrollment in those plans. So the recommendation would be to renew the medical plan with UMR as the third-party administrator. TRX is the prescription benefit manager. TMHCC is the stop-loss carrier. I put in there a bullet point that the assumption is TMHCC matches the competition from our stop-loss marketing efforts. We went to about 15 different markets here. And I said, "If they don't, the recommendation would be to place the stop-loss piece." Again, this is the part that the employees would never actually see. This is what protects the city with a company called ISU. Since I drove here today, I actually got word that TMHCC is matching those benefits, so, on the cost. So that would be the recommendation, just to renew without having to make any changes. Implement the mandatory Sharks program for alternative sourcing of high-cost brand and specialty meds. The projected savings there will offset the planned increase for 2026. And Sharks does offer a two-to-one return on investment guarantee. It's anticipated, based on trailing 12 months for this group, that it'll be right around six-to-one return on investment. Due to projected planned cost and renewal terms, no change in employee contributions. The only change will be the one benefit change to, on the high deductible health plan, to $3,400. Renew everything else without premium differences or change in coverage and continue to promote the Assured Excellence Program at no additional cost. As a reminder, that program, there is a page in here that is a direct-to-employer product that we've negotiated with these various nationally-recognized Center of Excellence facilities. No cost to the member and a reduced cost anywhere from 20% to 60% to the city if anybody participates in the program. Any questions?
Good. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I like the fact that premiums are going up.
Right?
That's good.
Yeah. Those are a lot easier to deliver.
Say again?
Those are a lot easier to deliver.
Oh, yeah.
When there's no increase to anybody.
And one thing I do want to, and maybe this question is for both of you, Kathy, because I'd talked to Jason before, but being self-funded, self-insured is more economical for the city to be that way than it is.
Fully insured?
Yes.
Correct.
I just want to explain that a lot. When I worked for the city, I was on the Employee Benefit Committee and learned a lot about, you know, it looks like it's, Reverend McNally, I retired in '17, so things were about the same. But that is, that self-funded is big for us and to keep costs down, especially when it comes to what the employees contributing, what the city contributes. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Yeah. So in a nutshell, when you think of it this way, fully insured, there's going to be anywhere from a 10% to 15% margin built in for the carriers. United Healthcare, Anthem, Aetna, they're for-profit companies.
I know.
So as a self-funded client, regardless of whether it's the City of Frankfurt or any other company that takes on that responsibility, you are keeping your costs at the lowest possible margin. There's no margin. You're just covering your own expenses.
And then I would like to express upon our employees that that's important, to take part in health fairs. We provide exercise, some gyms locally, do we or do we not?
We do.
I guess what I'm trying to say, when I was at the police department, the healthier we are as a city, the better off we are when it comes to premiums.
100%.
Okay. That was the message I tried to get to the police department and I just want to express that to all of our city employees, that regular, you know, and it doesn't matter how much you exercise. The reason I say this, I'm very in tune with my own health. I just had my physical, right? And actually, it was not bad. My cholesterol's a little high, but it runs a little high. I just, I guess what I'm saying is to participate in regular checkups and all that because as a group, it helps the entire city if we're aware of our health and keeping those premiums down. I don't think a lot of employees may know that, is what I'm saying.
Well, I think insurance is misunderstood a lot.
Exactly, yeah.
And I think the reality of it is, if we all would practice prevention, and this goes for everybody, including me, I'm in the industry.
I know that.
If we would all practice it, we could prevent something from becoming that long-term chronic condition on our employer's plan.
100%. And it's like, kind of like, my homeowners went up because State Farm, I'm paying for damage not to my home, I'm paying.
Everybody else.
Everybody else. And that, when I, I remember when I worked here, a lot of our employees didn't know that at the time. They didn't know the difference in that self-insure, is what I'm trying to say. self-insure, is what I'm trying to say. Sorry, I beat that to death.
No.
I just wanted to point that out.
I want to jump in too and say, not only does it help us to keep our premiums for employees low and taking care of yourself and your health, I agree with all of those things. Another point I want to add that I think sometimes people don't think about is competitively sourcing the services they receive. For example, where you receive your prescriptions. Wayne has just mentioned an amazing program, Centers for Excellence, where you can go to Johns Hopkins and Cleveland Clinic.
No, that's, that's awesome.
Really reputable locations for high-end treatment at lower cost to the employer on the self-funded plan and lower cost to the employee. Sharks, which is, I mean, I'm appreciative to Assured Partners for making us aware of this sourcing for pharmaceuticals, because that's becoming one of the big cost drivers that we're trying to manage. Early in the slides, Wayne showed like, we did amazing with our medical plan for several years, but the last four years, three of them haven't been so great. So we're trying to look at how do we turn that corner with minimal impact to employees. So we try to take a mild approach by not changing a lot of vendors, a lot of benefits, a lot of premiums. So kind of look at where's that low-hanging fruit. Right now pharmaceuticals is where there's some low-hanging fruit. So with minor impact to employees, we're, we actually passed those slides, if you don't, like, we're anticipated, using current data, to actually have about 269,000 worth of savings next plan year, which could drive us to where we're in budget, we're not going over budget, and keeping employee premiums level. To achieve that kind of savings to your medical plan, if we didn't make a plan with this pharmaceutical program, would be about $85 a month per person in increased premium. So just to kind of compare why we're making this recommendation versus a price increase.
Great. Love it.
Anybody else? Thank you, Kathy. Nice to meet you. I don't think I've met you before.
Not yet. Nice to meet you too.
Nice to meet you. Okay, Tima.
I'm Wayne Willis, so I do like the last name. Anything else?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. You have a great night.
Staff does, would need to request a motion right now so we can start open benefits.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Cool. I have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the row, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Woberson?
Yes.
It's weird, because I can't see him. Can we see him? Judge, we can't see him. All right. Discussion item number three is gonna be Fathers of Frankfurt. We have Michael Stone and Tanya Jernigan. Is that, is that right? Or, I probably butchered that.
How are you all?
So I can give a brief, kind of an introduction here is, this, they came and presented to the commission about two years ago, almost. And I've been working with Anna, who's another member of this, for a while to try to find office space, what they requested from us. And this is kind of an update for that. And I think we're almost ready to partner with this group.
Yay. Exciting.
Thank you guys so much for having us. My name's Tanya Jernigan. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and with the Division of Pediatric Forensic Medicine at Kentucky Children's Hospital. So just, can everybody hear me? Everybody's asked that, so I'm afraid that maybe other people can't hear. Like, the sound is not great. So we'll run through this really quickly, just so we don't take up a ton of your time. So just sharing a little bit about the work that we do, because not everybody is familiar with what pediatric forensic medicine is. So number one, you know, first and foremost, we're obviously part of Kentucky Children's Hospital. And, you know, I think KCH was really built to serve all of Kentucky, right? Not just the central Kentucky area, but that definitely is where we have our largest footprint. And we have a really great footprint here in Frankfurt as well, because we partner with a local regional hospital here as, with their NICU. But we'd love to continue to build that capacity and have our expertise to help all of Kentucky's families thrive and be successful. And so I think when we think about Kentucky, this is what we think about, right? We obviously have a giant bottle of Buffalo Trace bourbon on there, because part of this partnership is also with Buffalo Trace. And they're actually helping to fund Michael's position, part of his position, to engage fathers as a mechanism to prevent child maltreatment across this state. So they're our other kind of key partner in this, in this program. And obviously, we think about these things when we think about Frankfurt, right? And this lovely community that has obviously weathered a pretty devastating flood and will probably be more resilient for that. But unfortunately, we also know that there are really terrible things happening in Kentucky and more specifically within the Frankfurt community. And so this is probably not something that a lot of people think about when they think about Frankfurt, but this is something that our team thinks about, because this is, this is a family that we served, and this family lived in Frankfurt. And in particular, there was a small child, a two-and-a-half-year-old, who, who slept on that pillow, on that floor, next to that bed, next to her sisters, who were not old enough to care for her, but who were caring for her because her mom didn't feel that she could. Didn't have the capacity to bond with her, didn't have the social support system, didn't have the family support to bond with that child. And so when we think about that child, we think about a two-and-a-half-year-old who weighed as much as an eight-month-old should weigh. So if you've ever held an eight-month-old, think about how, how small they were. And then think about a two-and-a-half-year-old that you've met and how large they were, right? And think about the differences between those two things. And that child had really significant head injuries. She had, suffered just unspeakable physical abuse. And what that mom had asked for was help, right? What that mom needed likely was an extended support system, probably to include the father of that child. Whether or not those two people were together, it doesn't matter, but that dad could still have been involved in that child's life, or someone who maybe could have stepped up as a father figure. And so that's what our, our hope is with this program, is that we can kind of help support the Fathers of Frankfurt to be able to be more present in, in their children's lives to prevent child maltreatment. And so when we think about the epidemic of child maltreatment, Kentucky has the fourth highest rate in the country. We had, like, two years ago, we had this lovely dip where we were actually like the 14th highest. And so we were celebrating that a bit, because we've consistently been in the top five for several, several years before that. But in the newest report, we were back up to fourth. We're almost twice the national average. And as you can see, we are much higher than most of the states surrounding us. West Virginia and, and Indiana are pretty close to us. But Kentucky had just over 14,000 substantiated child victims of abuse. So those are cases that DCBS determined that absolutely there was enough evidence to support child abuse. There were probably some that maybe they couldn't substantiate, but it doesn't mean that there weren't concerns present. In 2020, or 2023, we had 263 more reports than we did in 2022. Okay? In Frankfurt specifically, substantiated or services needed. So services needed may be cases where we're saying, DCBS is saying, there's not enough to actually say that there was substantiated abuse, but this family is definitely presenting with lots of risk factors, and we need to put supports in place, i.e. something that Michael could do for that family. So in 2022, you had 289 cases of substantiated abuse just in Frank, Frankfurt, right, in Franklin County, and that was up from 216 in 2021. And then child fatality or near fatality cases, you can see that you had an increase of two deaths or near, near fatal deaths in 2023 from 2022 and 2021. And more specifically, I think, since 2014, 22 children in Frankfurt have died as a result of child maltreatment. And only 11 counties in Kentucky have more total child fatalities than Franklin County. Some of them are exactly who you think it would be, right? Like, much larger counties. But some of them are actually, you know, Franklin County is, is, is much smaller than some of them, if that makes sense. 22 children in Frankfurt, yeah, have died, have been identified by the Child Futility Review Panel as fatalities related to child maltreatment. Right? So when we think about child maltreatment, we know that there are definite layers of that, and there are lots of risk factors. So in Kentucky, caregiver substance use is definitely present in a vast majority of child maltreatment cases, much higher than the national average. Historically, rates of interpersonal violence in homes with maltreatment has also been higher, but that rate actually has been decreasing in Kentucky. So we're doing some good work, and I think that we should, we should, like, praise ourselves for that. Like, we are doing some good interventions. But what I think is really important to note is that Kentucky's children can only be okay as, as much as their adults who are raising them are okay. And if we don't have parents and caregivers who, who feel supported, they cannot support their children. And so that's really one of our hopes as we initiate this program here in Franklin County. And so why is this important? So the epidemic of child maltreatment goes well beyond, like, injuries that we see and the images that you saw in that picture, right? So when we think about adverse childhood experiences, we know that things like abuse and neglect and household dysfunction, right? All of those categories, physical, emotional, sexual abuse, things like having parents who are separated, having an incarcerated caregiver, right? Those impact children for the long haul into their adulthood. And so we know that early adversity has those lasting impacts. And it really has a dose response for adverse experiences, right? So meaning that the more adverse experiences a child has stacked onto them, the greater likelihood of adverse outcomes, right? So all of those bad things that can happen are more likely to happen with, with greater certainty, right, and magnitude throughout their life. And so that can be things like traumatic brain injury, that can be things like mental health conditions, right, depression, PTSD. We may see things like pregnancy complications, right, for moms who are pregnant, right, because their health is poor. We can see things like increased cancer, diabetes risks, cardiovascular issues, right, all of the things that, when you're, this is timely, because you just talked about health insurance, right, and people taking care of themselves. All of these adverse childhood experiences that your local kids are having right now, who may work for your government someday, right, and for your city, we, we know that we want to prevent these adverse experiences from happening, because they'll be healthier, right? They'll be able to work and be more productive in society. And so also, just thinking about, right, money, money talks, right, and money speaks. And so the economic toll in particular. We know that the lifetime economic burden of substantiated child abuse and neglect is over $400 billion, right? So when you're thinking about, what, what does that mean? So that quality adjusted life year reduction, just the expenses in healthcare for kids who've experienced maltreatment, the special education resources that these children sometimes have to receive, child welfare, welfare cases and criminal justice, right? Not only from parents and caregivers who are incarcerated, but for kids who have a lot of adverse childhood experiences, their pipeline into child justice is also really high, and so we incur those costs as well. And so what we know about the per victim lifetime cost in Franklin County is that it's over $240 billion, or million dollars. Okay? And that's just for substantiated cases of abuse. That does not count the cost of life or fatalities that you've had in 2022. All right. So when we think about Kentucky Children's Hospital and kind of what, what we're doing, KCH developed the Division of Pediatric Forensic Medicine in 2015. And so we have three physicians, we have three advanced practice providers, five nurses, and four social workers. So we're definitely an interdisciplinary team. We cover about half of the state, all five of those service area regions of DCBS, so, which doesn't technically include Salt River Trail, which is where Franklin County is, but we actually do serve a vast majority, but just because of proximity. Okay? We've trained over 1,000 individuals in the last year on issues of child maltreatment, and we work very closely with DCBS. So how, how do we support families? So we know that adversity is not destiny. And I can't prevent what's already happened to a kid, but I can help, right, help communities put in resources in place to actually help them overcome that adversity. We don't need kids to have perfect lives. We just need them to have supports in place and resources that are available to their caregivers to help them overcome some of those things. And so one of the ways that we propose doing that is through this, building this community by using fathers to increase child and community resilience. And I'm gonna turn it over to Michael, because he's gonna be the person doing this work.
Good afternoon. So my name's Michael Stone. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker with Kentucky Children's Hospital. And as I've been sitting here, I'm paying attention to all the signs. And one thing about Boot Camp for New Dads is that the goal is sort of to use this as a way to start introducing ourselves to fathers in the community and then really see where it goes from there. I noticed the sort of inclusive, sustainable city, right? And a lot of time, if you go to any, like, birth hospital type thing, education, it's all for moms. Same thing. That's in Lexington. I looked at the one here in Frankfurt, same thing. And so Boot Camp for New Dads focuses on the dads and tries to really get them involved. The way it's set up is it's peer-led. There's a facilitator who's trained who sort of guides the conversation. But it's peer-led, which means veteran dads, dads who already have a kid, age zero to six months, zero to a year, they show up with their child. And then the new dads, who are expectant fathers, who are about to have a kid, hopefully in the next three to six months, they attend. And what you see is this beautiful conversation. There are several topics about changes mom might experience, relationship with the co-parent, safety issues, handling newborn, feeding and changing a baby, how to calm a crying baby. The most powerful moment of, one of the ones that I witnessed a few months ago, was the dad of a child who had colic, talking about how mad he got and how frustrated he got. And we asked him, you know, one to 10, how upset were you? He said, 11. And we talked about what do you do in those moments to make sure that everybody's safe, to make sure the child's safe. So that's sort of what Boot Camp for New Dads is trying to do. We're collaborating with Buffalo Trace. We have a training there next Friday where we're gonna train some of their employees in being facilitators. And then they're gonna watch the boot camp on the 25th and go from there. The other piece of that is that we don't really know where it's gonna grow. I see the word over there, collaboration. And so this is sort of the gateway into it and what we're gonna start those conversations early in life. And then from there, we want to collaborate. One of the ones I shadowed in Lexington, they immediately, like, wanted to get each other's phone numbers to keep up, to keep the conversation going as their children got older. They self-organized a hangout conversation about four months after the initial boot camp, where they just got to talk again about what it's like having their kids and how everybody's doing. And so we know that engaged fathers, got some stats for you here, engaged fathers, infant mortality in the first month of life is four times higher for a child without an engaged dad. And so we really want this to be sort of an early thing that starts. And then we also know it protects for things against risk for child maltreatment, the mother's parenting stress as well. And then just as children age, the problems can continue in terms of school development, behavior problems, violence, that type of thing. And so we're gonna start, hopefully soon, with our, with training Buffalo Trace, getting our first session and involving the dads of Frankfurt.
Oh, yeah, you want to keep going? You did that part, yeah.
I forgot to click this button.
You forgot to click. So, yeah. And so in this particular space, will really allow us to have a, a presence here so that we can actually connect with community partners and, and engaged, engaged dads, right? People don't know, you know, sometimes people want to be engaged, right? Dads want to be engaged. They just don't know how. That hasn't been modeled for them. Multiple systems are not set up for dads to be engaged, unfortunately, right? There's also, there's always lots of questions about, well, where's your mom, right? My husband takes my kids to the doctor and they're like, where's the mom? And he's like, well, I'm the dad. Like, I know my kid. Like, I can, I can share information. And so normalizing that process for them will be a great benefit, not only to those fathers, but also to the entire community at large. So I think that's it. Dr. Howard is here too, in case, so she's our division chief, in case you have questions for her as well. So.
I think I saw most of you guys last time. And so I think the thing here that we wanted to really ask is for us to be able to have this physical presence in Frankfurt, because we think it's very important to be part of the community in order to build that prevention. So that is what we are here today for.
Yeah. Thank you all so much. Brilliant. I don't know if I enjoyed it, or like, thank you for the, thank you for the information. Anybody from the board, have you, Commissioner May?
Just want to say, you know, how much I appreciate the work that you all do, not just in our community, but just in your lives, wherever you happen to be, you're making a difference. We're all parents. We all have small, my child just turned three. My oldest will be eight in November. And I'm the type of person that, the best way I can say it is I feel something before I understand something. So I see that picture and I feel all that emotion. And I don't necessarily understand what to do better, also from our positions. So it's good to hear from you, because I know, without a doubt, every single one of us would say, the most vulnerable population. would say, the most vulnerable population, without a doubt, is our children, and we have to do everything we can to protect them, period. So it's unfortunate to have to sit through that slideshow, it's unfortunate to see those numbers, but, you know, rest assured, I'm listening, you know? And if you, while you're here in our community and you're continuing to work, you know, if you see something that you think we could do better, that we could invest in to make an impact so that we don't have to see pictures like that, I know that will never be the case, unfortunately, the work never stops. But just thank you, and all yours, you know? So whatever the next steps are, please keep in touch and let us know so we continue to help, yes, we continue to help.
I have two questions. Basically echoing Commissioner May, we are all parents, I just had my very crazy three-year-old in here earlier. He was sitting up here trying to hold up space, rushed him out the door. But yeah, it is really unfortunate, and I think that we know these things happen, it's very sad. But I have a couple of questions, just in terms of, you know, how are the new dads in this community going to be identified? Is that going to be a plan in motion that you all would share with the Board of Commissioners, maybe quarterly or something like that? And then also, just following up after that, you know, I know, as a woman, I experienced postpartum depression really bad, I was in the thick of that for a solid two years. And I know, I don't know what it looks like for you all and the timeline of you all holding space here at City Hall or in this community, but, you know, what are the steps, the future initiatives, collaborations with a lot of the organizations that we have in Frankfurt? What is it like for the dads that experience, maybe not postpartum, but also are in the thick of just the motions of parenthood?
Yeah. So in terms of finding dads, we are, the plans to sort of do it, make a flyer, go to different places in town, right? So we were talking about it on the way up here. I know the, what is it, Wanteday Robinson place, stop by there, we talked about extension, want to go to all the, you know, the traditional, like, birthing type. So I think the hospital has, like, a midwife, like, midwife center where I want to go. So finding people who are hopefully about to have kids, also Buffalo Trace is partnering with us, and so hopefully, any employees there can, they can be on the volunteer side of sort of being trained and facilitate, they can be on the attend side, and so that part, I'm open to ideas as well, in terms of getting to know Frankfurt. And then the follow-up, you know, I mentioned that collaboration, I mean, I have ideas of what I potentially could see, but I think that's more of doing the work of thinking about what it could look like and then seeing what actually happens and trying to marry the two. And so one thing that I would like is that Boot Camp for New Dads is very focused on this zero to six month timeframe, right, sort of pre-mobility, and things that dads are going to face, and my, I think a natural evolution of that is, could you, could you piggyback off that and have another conversation at a year, right, when you hit some toddler phases? And, you know, home safety matters a bit more after six months when they're moving around, exploring the home, right? Do you have, what, how do you have different conversations as the age up? So that's what I'm thinking of, but I think the execution of that is based on. Not there yet. Still on the younger side. But yeah, so seeing like how it ages and, you know, can we keep core groups who are interested in getting enough out of those conversations to keep coming and that type of stuff.
I love that. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
I can't add the length right now requested, we're looking at, for the MOU we'll bring to you while it's a year timeframe that we have right now, and then we'll readdress at that point.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Richardson, sorry.
So we are going to house them here, y'all?
They've asked for two times a week, just the office space in City Hall, that's what they asked for like two years ago, like I said, we've been working on this for a while. Took them a while to find staffing and for us to find office space. So yes, it'd be one little office space here twice a week during business hours.
Great, and I want to echo Commissioner May, if there's anything else you feel that we can do to help, unfortunately, having been a retired police officer, I mean, that pictures like that are nothing new. I hate to say that, but this is something I think every community needs. So anything we can do, thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Have a good day.
Yeah, thank you, you too.
We will bring that to you all at voting meeting, the MOU, we have it all kind of worked out with them. Next up on discussion items, we have discussion item number four, which is aimless billing discussion with Chief Carpenter.
How are you, Chief?
Good, good afternoon. I got just a real quick presentation for you before you just see an ordinance change. So this came about because we have not changed our billing rates since 2012. So I'll start off by that, that's how the discussion got started. I presented it to the Public Safety Meeting, and they suggested bring it here. So this is where we're at right now. Cut off some of the PowerPoint, but we're the first line. So that's where our current rates are for the different levels of service. As you can see, we do not charge at all for ALS disposables or BLS disposables, and we're only leading just barely in three categories, and those are all the surrounding counties. I did get Wolfert County's rates late and didn't get to add them, but they're actually lower than everyone else, so it doesn't make a difference in the presentation. And the other thing we don't charge for is no treatment, no transport. So how do we get the rates that we got now? I don't know what the rates were in 2002, but the commission approved a 5% rate increase each year until 2007. In 2007, Chief Posich asked for a $400 increase in all rates, as well as an 8% increase each year until 2012. The BLC approved this. The rates were very progressive at the time, so there hasn't been a need for any changes until now. Why now? One of the main reasons is we operate a lot differently than we did when these rates were put in place. So as you can see, we don't charge for non-transports, and we do a lot of treatment on scene that we did not used to do. So we'll start IVs, we'll give people medicine on scene. At the time these rates came into place, we did not do that at all. If you got an IV and got medicine, you went to the hospital with us. Inflation. In 2020, we bought an ambulance and it was $249,000. In December of this year, we paid $348,000 for the same ambulance. We project the next two are going to be closer to $400,000, maybe $450,000, and those are needed now. And billing has changed to allow for reimbursement of disposable materials that we use on runs. So if we change it, it'll allow us to recover more of our cost. What I propose is we start charging for ALS and BLS disposables and non-transports January 1st of 2026, that'll give our billing company time to get ready. And then beginning July 1st of '26, an 8% increase to all charges by annually, ending in the year 2034. And that should let us keep up with the surrounding counties without jumping too far ahead of them like we did previously with a 8% annual increase. We jumped way ahead and had to pause for a while. And I want to add a $200 ALS disposable fee, $150 BLS disposable fee, and a $360 no transport fee. By implementing the disposables and non-transport fees, we should see a gain of an additional $273,000 to the budget annually. If implemented January 1st, the billing company projects an additional $136,000 in revenue this fiscal year. Questions?
Commissioner Rich, May?
Thanks for the update, thanks for the conversation we had in the Public Safety Committee meeting. Why, do you know why we started offering the services that we weren't charging for at the time? Was that an internal decision that the city made, a state decision? How did that come to be?
So the protocols on a state level changed to allow for some different things, especially during the opiate ordeal where we were making opiate runs, overdose after overdose after overdose, they allowed us to start giving Narcan and treating and then not have to transport that patient. So that turned into treating blood sugars and then all kinds of other treatments on scene. And in, I believe, 2021, the ACLS guidelines changed, so we essentially will go into someone that's having cardiac arrest now, and we will do everything that they do in the hospital, and then at the end of that, if we can't help them, we leave them in place. That was never a thing before.
Commissioner Richardson. Oh, okay. All right.
Yes, that's it. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
We're working on the ordinance change now, and we'd bring it to you all.
Go ahead, Mayor.
He asked if we were finished with discussion on this topic.
Oh, I think we were trying to clear up when we were going to continue, continue this conversation first.
End of this month, and it takes two readings to go into effect. So, yeah, we're going to try to get the first reading at the end of this month at the voting meeting, and then the November voting meeting, that way it can be in place by January. And that concludes all discussion items.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Do you have something to add to that, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
Correct, the first reading of the ordinance.
Before we go into action items, I remember that we take a recess.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in recess? Public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Any public comment?
Is there any public comment in the room today for this particular reading? Seeing, seeing that there's no public comment, I will call for a motion to close the hearing and return back to the work session meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Unger to close the hearing and return to the work session meeting. This was put in motion and adopted at 4:02 PM. Can I have a look? Everybody say aye. Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We good? Okay. We are now back in the work session meeting. This is much harder than y'all think it is, okay?
I was going to tell you, I have an old Roberts Rules book I should have brought you.
All right, we're back in work session meeting.
They now will proceed with the action item related to the taxes in the public hearing. This is the second reading, an ordinance fixing the rate of taxation for the year of 2025 on all real intangible personal property subject to tax, public service companies and levying said tax for all city purposes. This ordinance establishes that the 2025 City of Frankfurt ad valorem tax rate is 19 and a half cents on each $100 valuation of all real and personal property, and 19 and a half cents on each $100 valuation on public utilities and public service companies taxable on a franchise basis.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Shar-May, can you call the, or Madam Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Unger?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Wookerson?
Yes.
That motion carries. All right, moving on to discussion of tentative agenda. Everybody have anything? Ms. Mayor?
Voting meeting, yes, Mayor had something.
Mayor has something.
Just to confirm, are we voting on fathers of Frankfurt? Is there an MOA or something we're voting on in the voting session?
Yes. Correct.
Then we had a couple of second readings carried over from last time, I believe that's all.
All right, moving on to the next unfinished business. Any items that were tabled from a previous meeting that we want to discuss? Commissioner Richardson?
Are we going to have a presentation is, is from?
Finance?
Yes.
That's in November.
November, and then what about the garbage?
November.
Okay. You got to keep me straight.
That should be, we're shooting for work session, I don't know if the garbage will be work session November or work session December.
Any board comments? I'm sorry, are there any new business anybody has they would like to discuss? Don't see any. Board comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you all.